Okay, all rise, please. Ladies and gentlemen, the public vote was noted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies on which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In the course of the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and the Town News newspapers, the constituent Borough Kirtz Borough Libraries, as well as posting the school district's principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco products should be prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violated subject fined not to exceed $100. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
And Al?
Here.
This is Stephanie. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his/her/their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. We're going to get into a presentation tonight. It's Patrick Fletcher's School Update. And as soon as he gets situated, he will bring you up to speed. Patrick, whenever you're ready.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you all for attending. First order of business is annually, the chief school administrator is to report to the Board of Education by September 30, the graduation data from the previous year. This is pursuant to New Jersey statutes 18A7(c-7) and 18A7e-3. Now, interestingly enough, the Board receives this information in a variety of ways over the course of the end of the school year. And I also give an informal report to the Board as we close in on graduation. However, there's a specific format that needs to be followed, which includes the total number of students who graduated, the number of students who graduate under substitute competency test process, the number of students who graduated under a portfolio appeals process, the number of students receiving state-endorsed high school diplomas as a result of IEPs, the number of students denied graduation, and the number of students denied graduation because they were unable to complete the end-of-course PARC assessments. However, please note that the class of 2020, there would be a breakdown that would include student performance on standardized tests, but all of that was waived due to the public health crisis, as well as the designation of the IEP process and the portfolio appeals process. So our report is very simple. We have 260 graduates. We have seven graduates that are continuing, or seven students that are continuing in graduation, continuing in their education through the age of 21. Those are students who have special needs, and we had two students that did not graduate. So of our class of 263 that we had in there, you had 260 that graduated, two that did not graduate, and one joined the other six individuals who are continuing into the age of 21. And that concludes the report because it is abbreviated because of the public health crisis. The second aspect of my presentation is to continue the discussion of reopening the schools, which is scheduled for October 5. So on September 16, we began our test of the COVID tracking software. This is software where students and staff members are to complete a survey regarding exposure to COVID and/or symptoms related to COVID. This is not a survey to determine whether someone has the common cold or some other illness. A regular occurring illness would simply follow the same procedures that we've had in place for many years, where if a parent feels child is unable to attend school because they're sick, they just call in and report the child's absence. This is solely designed to make sure that someone who may have tested positive or has been in contact with someone who has tested positive does not come into school. A second test will take place tomorrow. There will be an email that will go out to parents, students, and staff members to remind them of to complete the test. We will do one more test during the week of the 28th. And what should happen is that students will complete the survey. They will get a clearance email that will come back on their phone. They should present that when they're entering the school building, and then they will also get a temperature check on the way in the door. The same process applies to staff members. Our other staff members who are not part of the email chain, which include custodians, substitutes, et cetera, will be required to complete an individual paper form like we are doing now for athletics and our athletic program, and when we had our special education students in during the summer. Secondly, I sent a detailed letter to the community on September 17 that was also sent to staff. It had 14 different items on it, but the most, I think, salient part of it was to indicate to you that over the course of the next two weeks, there will be additional information that will come out that will be building-specific. The middle school is different than the high school, so where students come into the building, where staff members come into the building, will be different in the middle school than they are at the high school. There will be additional communication over the course of this week and over the course of next week. Now, it's a lot of information that's going to be pushed out to people. It will be sometimes confusing. However, there are contact information, there's contact information on there. If it's a building-specific issue, you should certainly direct it to the middle school office or the high school office, and then we will direct it to a person who can help you. The middle school released a letter specific to the middle school on September 18 that described a process or a series of tours for incoming seventh grade that will begin tomorrow, so that seventh graders will come in small groups in order to get familiarized with the building. They'll be coming in at the end of the day, 2:30 to 3:00, on six separate days. The high school also released a letter that was specific to ninth-grade students having the opportunity to tour the facilities that will begin on September 24. And both buildings indicated that you should, or both letters indicated that you should reply to the, it gave a person to reply to so that we could keep track of the individuals who would be arriving to participate in the tours. In addition, we sent out emails to all of the families who chose an all-virtual instruction process over the summer to confirm their participation in all virtual instruction. This was an opportunity for those who had a change of heart to be able to switch from either, to switch from virtual to in-person instruction. We also sent emails to the families who chose the hybrid instruction specifically to determine that you were in Cohort A, who will be reporting on Mondays and Thursdays, and Cohort B, that would be reporting on Tuesdays and Fridays. That is also an opportunity that if you chose to be participating in the hybrid instruction, you could make a determination to come back to virtual, so that we have an accurate count of the number of students who will be reporting to the facilities on October 5. I also indicated that we are going to have a Riverdale-only SAT on Wednesday, September 23rd. That's two days from now. So the senior class, this is only open to seniors, there's over 140 students who have signed up for it. Those seniors will participate in the SAT program. That will conclude their instructional day. Students that are not participating in the SAT will follow the regular virtual, regular virtual day that we have, the eight-period day on September 23, recognizing that there will be less students in the class because of the 140-odd students that are participating in the SAT. We were also very fortunate to be able to secure Saturday, October 10, to issue a Riverdale-only ACT program. That information was released to the seniors by Mr. Principal last week. There'll be another round that will go out, so that anybody who missed it will have the opportunity to sign up and participate. That would give us, give our students who were shut out of other locations, who, because they were closed or changed because of COVID, that should give every one of our students the opportunity to take one of the tests that are used commonly as a part of the college application process. Also, we will begin to, I want everybody to recognize that we've been taking advantage of the fact that the buildings are unoccupied by students to continue to provide enhancements above and beyond what we've done before. I'm happy to report that the critical PPE has been secured, and we are in the process of making sure that the buildings will be ready for student occupancy on October 4. While it appears at this particular moment that all personnel matters have been resolved, there are still some lingering issues, but they should not impact the ability for us to open on October 5, unless there's some unforeseen series of events that take place. So sitting here now, standing here now, on the 21st, I feel very confident that we'll be able to open our doors on October 5. I really would like everybody to understand that I do believe that the first couple of days will be somewhat rocky. There may be some issues related to the entrance process, getting all the students in the door within a timely manner, getting them distributed to their first-period class within a reasonable time, but I suspect that over the course of a couple of days, that process will even out, and we should be in a better position to have the day flow as it appears on paper. Finally, the Board of Education has been working on a document for frequently asked questions, pardon me, trying to anticipate things that people may be asking. We will be posting that document directly to the website tomorrow, so that people have an opportunity to review it and go through. Go through. I think it's a pretty well-written document that's fairly comprehensive, that will answer many questions. However, let me reiterate, or let me end where I started. We sent out information, or began to send out a lot of information at the end of last week, particularly on the 17th and the 18th, and there will be some additional information that will come out over the course of this week as well as next week. It's a lot of information. It's information that needs to be read and digested, and it will be building-specific. So it would be important that if you're a high school person and you have questions, you reach out to the high school contacts that are listed on the communications, and if you're a middle school person, that you reach out to the middle school people who are listed on the communications, because they will be able to get you quickly the best answer to your questions. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I'm now going to open it up to questions regarding Patrick's presentation. And as before, anybody writing in a question, please state your name, and anybody who is personally going to ask a question, do the same, and you will be limited to three minutes. And be respectful of everybody, please. Mark?
First question is a written question from Naomi Gwerz of Ritteridge. She says, "I want to applaud the teachers for the tremendous effort on their part. As parents, we have been really pleased with the remote experience to date. We look forward to 10-5 more than ever. That being said, the technology department and their slow response to help kids when there's an issue is troublesome. This is the kid's greatest tool to ensure success in the class right now, and even with the hybrid and without it working properly, they are behind." "I understand the department is likely overwhelmed, but the lack of response when sending emails or leaving messages is not acceptable. I would like to know what additional support is being provided to that department to support an increased need for tech support, and if there isn't additional support, I would like to suggest it to be evaluated, including an emergency phone number that kids can use during school hours."
I understand everything that you said. I have, I am aware of some examples of students still having a set of problems. I am not aware of a widespread aspect of this. However, if it's your child and your student, that's very personal, and I understand that that can be very frustrating. And all I can say at this point is that I will speak with the tech department tomorrow to determine what, if any, backlog exists regarding repairs or asking any questions. The Board is, has been discussing ways to augment the technology department, and we had a critical discussion earlier this evening, which may result in the ability to have additional personnel and/or service contracts, so that we can speed up any response time.
Okay, we have a hand raised, and that's Joan Ingram. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, Joan Ingram. Kristin, actually, Mark, I feel like we're on a first-name basis at this point. So I think it's fair to say that you have a lot of community members that are really excited about the prospect of a return to in-person learning. I would like to ask, though, or maybe actually beseech, is a better word to use, the superintendent and the Board to commit to reassessing the current hybrid plan to incorporate more instructional time per day. Currently, four days a week, the students get four hours of instructional time with the plan, and a quick jump on the internet demonstrated to me that Riverdale should be able to do better than four hours a day. So for example, TenaFly has a plan for their hybrid schedule with five hours of instructional time in the day. Ridgewood has a plan for four hours and 15 minutes in the morning, and then a return to virtual learning in the afternoon, giving the students an additional 90 minutes with 15 minutes of office hours. Westwood High School similarly has four hours in the morning and then a return to virtual learning for an hour and 15 minutes plus 25 minutes of office hours. So, you know, these numbers are really different than our own, and yielding those districts what amounts to an extra instructional day across the span of the week. So now, I don't know how much prep time the district is contractually mandated to give the teachers, but I do know that a good use of their time should not be on enforcing social distancing, and that a reworking of the afternoon time could add instructional minutes to the students' day. I propose phases to the return to in-person instruction, with Phase 1 being the current plan, and then within the next few weeks, you issue surveys, gather data, and formulate a Phase 2, which would include more instructional time per day. Is this something the district can commit to? If so, can you add more voices to the conversation and planning? And if not, why?
Well, it's always been our plan, or certainly my plan, to evaluate the effectiveness of the schedule as we go through it. Unfortunately, based upon my recommendation, delayed the process until October 5. So any evaluation will not commence until we get to that point. I am aware of what takes place in other school districts. We don't operate as an island, and we will just continue to evaluate the process to see how we can continue to adjust as we go forward.
Has that already been part of the conversation, that that's the goal, or is that something that's just evolving now?
It's always been part of my discussion with my administrative staff, is to how we can continue to expand the instructional opportunities for students.
Okay, we have a written question from Susan Garcia from Oradell. Is the hybrid schedule the same as was released several weeks ago?
Yes.
Do we have any more questions out there, please?
I'll ask another question if there are no other ones. It's Joan Kristin again.
Debbie Barashini has her hand raised. We're going to let her. Mark, if you can.
Hi. Yes, question. Can we consider, if we're only having four hours of onsite learning, can we reconsider the four core curriculum topics versus anything else? If we only have four hours in the building, can it be on the four core curriculum?
The short answer to that question is no. However, you deserve a deeper explanation than that. We're trying to provide the opportunity for students to still have an experience with the elective program, with the other subjects that would fall outside what you refer to as the Core Four. The Department of Education's road back did not alleviate our responsibility to provide those opportunities, so we're trying to fit our current schedule, if you will, which, if, on any given period, would have English, world language, mathematics, science, an elective, or more than one elective, art, music, phys ed. They're all counterbalanced, so that we can balance the number of students that are in the classrooms on a regular basis without a COVID situation. So we are still duplicating the opportunity to do that in the hybrid schedule. So in other words, there still are going to be, on Period 1, art, music, math, English, phys ed, any number of electives, science, et cetera, will still be offered across the spectrum to students. So unfortunately, reworking to just offer the Core Four is not an option to, is not an option at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thanks.
Did we lose her?
We have a written question from Tricia Hradnik. Didn't mention the town. How long will be hybrid scheduled till all students return?
I don't know the answer to that question. The simple fact of the matter is that the road back impose, which is the New Jersey Department of Education's plan, imposes enormous restrictions on school districts in how we can occupy the building, provide for social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. One of our biggest obstacles is going to be lunch. How can we, the road back imposes an enormous obligation that basically does not allow the way that we have been serving lunch before. We have a limited period of time for lunch. There's one period at the high school. There's two periods at the middle school. There's too many students to try to accommodate a place for every one of them to be able to eat in a socially-distanced manner, and if they're utilizing the cafeteria services, to secure food in a timely manner. So until we were able to resolve those issues, or we get some changes from the Department of Education on the road back, I can't answer that question. It's certainly something that we keep our eye on a regular basis.
Another written question from Marie Antonelli. By my loose calculation, the students will lose approximately 50 minutes of instruction in each subject each week when we switch from all virtual to hybrid. What is the plan to make up for those lost minutes as it relates to completing the curriculum? the curriculum?
Well, I, I don't think you can look at the schedule simply by calculating the number of in-person instruction minutes versus the current schedule. Even though on periods, on Mondays and Tuesdays, periods one through four are meeting, students will still have and still should have asynchronous learning taking place in periods five, six, seven, and eight, and vice versa on Thursdays and Fridays. So while it may not appear from a minute-to-minute point of view that, that it equals the amount of time that follows the straight eight schedule, there still will be learning taking place over the course of that time. And when I refer to asynchronous learning, that's going to be learning that students will be doing on their own, based upon information that comes from the teachers.
Debbie Bargiachi, you had your hand raised?
No, I'm sorry, my hand's not raised, sorry.
We have another written question and that is from Julie Leopold from Oradell. When the kids are physically learning in the building, will the teachers always be on the building? Or will there be instances where the kids are in school, but the teachers are teaching remotely?
Yes, there will be, there will be times where there are students in the school and their teacher is teaching remotely because the teacher's been provided an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act, but students will not be unsupervised during that time. And by the way, parents who, or students and, and parents who fall into that category will be notified over the course of the next couple of weeks of who, that their child is in one of those classes.
We have a comment from Oradell from Karen Gleystine. As there was extreme concern about the virtual model, would, to commend the MS teachers, as an incoming seventh grade parent, I have been highly impressed by their level of engagement in the full virtual schedule. Obviously, nothing more ideal than being back to normal, but just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
One more question written from Susan and Stephen Usatine, River Edge. Can the district survey families this week as a baseline if they believe the current four-hour day is adequate and survey again one week into the hybrid schedule? Also, are teachers aware of planning for the possibility of a longer school day?
First part of the question, we're, we are focusing on reopening the school building on October 5th and making sure that the current hybrid model is, we're able to operate it and I, able to bring the students in and make sure that we're providing it safely. So I will, I will not be surveying pre, pre-October 5th. At some point or another, once the schedule is up and running, we will begin to look at what are the next phases that we can employ to move forward.
Next written question from Nancy Shapiro of Oradell. I'm delighted that in-person instruction is returning. Could you please clarify asynchronous learning on the off days? I'm concerned that my daughter will have to teach herself pre-calculus and AP classes with only having instruction three days per week.
Well, I, I, and any subject regardless of what a child is enrolled in. There will be three opportunities where their class is together. There's the two days of in-person instruction plus the all-virtual day of eight periods on Wednesday. So that there will be opportunities there for the teachers who are involved in all the subject matters to be able to provide instruction for, or opportunities for that asynchronous learning. Will students be involved in having some opportunities to teach themselves? Of course they will. They, they do that now. However, we have built in office hours or opportunities for staff members to be available to help, help students. And any one of our staff members, when contacted by a student, will be, will be able to set up some opportunities to assist the students if they're struggling in any way, shape, or form.
Joan Ingram?
Yeah, sorry, I lost connection earlier. Are the teachers allowed to leave during that afternoon prep slash common planning time? Are they allowed to leave and prep from home?
Teachers are, are required to be in the facility Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
Including that time in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. And then just to kind of come back to Marie Antonelli's question, I think she elaborates, I see in the chat as well, but I think the concern from parents is that the teachers are still going to be expected to work their way through the curriculum. And as you just said, the students do at times, which is a good thing, teach themselves. But we are very concerned that the teachers are going to maybe have pressure on them to complete what they would regularly be completing during the school year. And the students will not be able to keep pace with that because they're not with the teachers as much as they would be pre-shutdown.
It's a valid concern, but I, I, I believe our teaching staff is well-aware of, of the pressures that everybody is going through. I, I, I stress this over and over again. This is my first pandemic. I'm not saying that in order to be flippant in any way, shape, or form. I think this is a learning opportunity that we're all going through. It is an enormous topic of conversation on how do we determine which student may be falling behind? They may have a learning gap because they were unable to participate in in-person instruction. And I, I, I believe that we'll be evaluating that for each and every student as we go along. Will we be able to get through everything that the state of New Jersey says you should? I doubt it sincerely. But will we be able to get through everything that's necessary for a student to be successful moving from one year to the next? Or certainly, in our case of our seniors moving on to senior year, I absolutely believe that will be the case.
All righty, from Marie Antonelli of Oradell, just a follow-up and that's, I guess, goes with Joan Ingram's question as well. She asks, so if my child has math period one and will see your teacher either in person or virtually on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I might understand that she will have math work on Thursday and Friday, even when she does not meet with her teacher? If so, is this new material?
Again, it, some of that is going to be personalized based upon what goes on in the classroom. I imagine some of it will be try this, try that. I imagine some of it will be reinforcement to make sure that there is a greater understanding of the concepts that have been introduced. So I, I think if you have a student that's in a class, and I'm just going to use Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday as an example, first period. If they're in first period, whether they're in the building or home, because they're not in the A, because the A cohort's in on Monday and the B cohort's in on Tuesday, and other students have chosen to be virtual all the time, to me, that's three days of lessons that the teacher is teaching to the students. And then there will be the opportunities for the students to continue the work that they've been introduced to there. And I suspect that there will be an opportunity for new material to be introduced, which we've done in the past. And we've all heard the term before, but that's called the flipped classroom, where students will try to make sense of some new material on their own. And then when they get back into the classroom, the teacher and the students work through the understanding. That's not an uncommon thing. It's been going on for quite some time.
Next question is from Kucharsky. The public was told that in-person instruction was delayed was due to personnel and the need to replace teachers taking leave. Have all of the positions been filled at this time and will all classes be covered? Or are there classes that will not run due to lack of faculty members?
At this moment, as I said earlier this evening, at this moment, all of the issues have been resolved. Can there be more issues between now and October 5th? Of course there can. But we, I anticipate that we will have a full complement of, of instruction on October 5th. However, as I mentioned, some folks have been provided accommodations through the Americans with Disabilities Act. So there will be some teachers who are teaching virtually, and they will not be in the classroom in person, but there will be someone in the classroom supervising the students that are there.
We have a raised hand. Dina Doni?
Yes, hello. I had a question regarding the students attending all virtual and continuing all virtual. How will their schedules change? Like currently, they have a full schedule. How will that be altered when we go to the hybrid slash virtual?
They will follow the hybrid schedule.
Okay, so it's like A through L and then, so they'll follow that schedule as well going forward?
Correct.
Okay.
However, as, as an example, on, they, they're on month, again, using the same example, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they will just be attending period one on both the in-person days and the virtual day, virtually.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question from Oradell, Christina S. has a follow-up to Julie Leopold's question. Is it, is it only in the instances in which the teacher has an ADA accommodation that the teacher would be teaching remotely while the students are in school? Is it my understanding from the August meeting, there's only a handful of teachers with an ADA accommodation? What's the approximate number of teachers who will be teaching live students remotely?
Eight.
We have a raised hand for Vicki. Vicki, you have your hand raised?
Uh, no, that was a mistake. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, we have another written question and that is from, second here, Liz Oriana from Oradell. Can you please clarify what the students will be required to do on their own without live instruction? How will the decreased time with live instruction be addressed for students with IEPs?
Students with IEPs will also have the opportunity to receive additional supports from instructional aids, from, from teachers that we will make available to assist them as they move through the process. So any, any child that has an IEP, I will, I, I suggest that the parent speak with and contact the case manager so that if there are issues that are going on, that we can address them quickly so that students don't have, don't have problems that build up and we get them as quickly as we can.
Okay, we have one from Debbie from River Edge. Can you please explain why gym classes are virtual and being recorded and why other students are fully able to see each other working out?
Well, all, all classes, whether you're in an English class or a math class, et cetera, students should be able to participate and see each other because they should all be participating with the cameras on through the, the team's setting. So phys ed should be no different. However, I, I understand, because I spoke to a parent over the weekend, that, that there was a couple of particular concerns about it, which I addressed with the phys ed department this morning and asked them to be considerate of, of students that may have an IEP or may have some, of a physical issue so that there's no opportunity for someone to be bullied, ridiculed, whatever the word you want to use in it. But all classes should be live and all classes should be, the students should be able to see each other and participate with the teacher.
Next question is from Nancy Shapiro of Oradell. The community places tremendous value on in-person instruction. It seems that, seems the Wednesday all remote day is a lost opportunity. Will the board reconsider hybrid with students in the building all five days? For example, Northern Highlands uses the alternating day one, day two schedule with no remote days. To clarify, there's no day where everyone is remote.
As I indicated before, our goal is to get the hybrid schedule that we have approved up and running on October 5th. Once we have that, we will take an, and it's running for a while and we get through the bumps and bruises of opening school, we will begin to focus on other options that may be available.
And Vicki, you have your hand raised?
Hi, how are you tonight? Can you just give me an idea of how many replacement teachers needed to be hired? And also, I, I'd like to go back to the school day, the hybrid schedule. How many minutes is the actual class? And how much time is being allowed in between the classes for the students? It doesn't seem to me like there's going to be that much time in the classroom for teaching. So I guess where I'm really going with this is, isn't the school day, I believe it's ending at 12:40, go a little bit later where the classes could be in session for a little bit longer? Not, I think in high school level, they should be able to go till about 1:00, 1:30 without lunch. They could bring a power snack, add a little more teaching time to the day.
The, each period during the hybrid schedule is 60 minutes long, which in the high school current, pre-COVID, our period was 56 minutes. In the middle school, it was 43 minutes. So that's the length of the period. As far as, you asked the first question about the combinations, I forgot. I'm sorry, I forgot. Oh, how many teachers did we have to hire? At this particular moment, we've hired people to supervise the classroom. We haven't had to replace a teacher yet because the teacher who has an accommodation will work remotely. But this, because all the students are still utilizing, whether they would be in, in-person or remote, are still utilizing the team's format to participate in the class. So the teacher can still format to participate in the class. So the teacher can still do that from a remote location, and then the, oh, there will be someone in the room supervising the students that are physically present.
So, um, I, I have another question now. So teachers who have requested to leave for childcare reasons will be teaching from at home while they are caring for their children?
No, I, as I said before, at this point, the only, at this point, right here tonight, September 21st, the only individuals that have an opportunity to teach from home on the days of in-person instruction are those with an ADA accommodation.
Okay. Okay, I just, I, I wasn't quite sure I was understanding what you were saying. So I just wanted to clarify it.
Sure.
But in saying, also in saying this, there will be situations where your, a student can be in the classroom, perhaps with the teacher, or perhaps with an aide, and the teacher teaching virtually.
That's correct.
Okay, so now back to part two of my, my concern was a little bit more learning time being built into the day by extending the classes they're taking. Since they're only meeting once a week.
As I indicated before, we will be opening on October 5th with the hybrid schedule that we have. We will evaluate it as we move through the process. I see something popping up saying, can you define a while? When I say a while, it's, as I said, I believe, I believe wholeheartedly that the first week or so will have some bumps and bruises with making sure that everyone gets in the building properly, everyone gets in the building appropriately, and we move forward. It will be probably a month, perhaps more, that we have, before we have an opportunity to look at changing the schedule further. Again, if something happens from the outside, if the governor lifts the public health crisis, if the public health crisis worsens, there will still be, those are still two scenarios that are not anticipated by, by the schedule. If the governor lifts the public health crisis, we will find a way to get back to a full day. If, if the public health crisis worsens, we will have to deal with how to move forward in that scenario. And, and again, I'm, I'm not a medical expert. I'm just responding to everything that we keep hearing about what flu season's going to bring, what a resurgence might bring, et cetera. Right now, I'm thrilled that the numbers in New Jersey remain good. I'm thrilled at that. And that gives us an opportunity to continue to move forward with getting students back into the building.
I couldn't agree with you more. I am going to hope that there's a 30-day evaluation, and we can start adding more time to the school day and start getting things back to the new norms. So let's hope for a good start, and the next meeting, we'll be bringing on the next phase.
Our next question from Liza and Gary Barth of River Edge. Are kids allowed to eat a small snack at their desks on the in-person days?
The H building will, is providing that information to, to the students. We, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe all we're asking is that students bring their own water bottle to the, to the school so that they have a source to drink. But again, I don't have that particularly in front of me, and I apologize. So if you have a particular question, if your child's in the middle school, direct that to Mr. Friedman. If it's, direct it to the high school, which is Mr. Heinz.
Next written question is John Lynn Regidon from River Edge. I commend all the hard work everyone has done so far, including our board, superintendent, and all the teachers. Virtual days are much better now than it was in the spring. I think we should all allow our educators to implement their plans so we can get our feet in the door first. There really is no blueprint for this ever. Once these plans are working and reevaluated, there should be no reason not to increase the student population or add more hours in school. And we have another question from Debbie Gainsborough. If the hybrid doesn't work or the health crisis worsens, please, please, at least keep what we have now with the live instruction, because since there is so much better than what we had in the spring. Praying for the hybrid to work.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Mark, that's it. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to get into the committee reports now. Budget and finance. We had a busy week with committee reports. We'll start with budget and finance. Alan?
Yeah, we met last Thursday again, and went through the money situation. And I'm happy to say that we've spent so, well, not happy to say what we've spent so far, but we've spent about $97,000 so far. We have everything pretty much that we will need to open. We are budgeting additional funds for substitutes. We've applied for a couple of grants, one of which we received. And when all is said and done, we'll probably be spending at least half more to purchase additional disinfectants, cleaning supplies, whatever we need. But we're in good shape financially.
Thank you, Alan. Facilities and security, Doug?
We met last Tuesday, and this time walked the middle school building, looking at the classrooms to make sure that they were prepared, and looking at all of the new signage and lines down the hallway to indicate to students where they should be, directions in which they should be walking. Happy to report that is, we, so I was looking good. We also reviewed all, to Alan's point, all of the PPE that had come in and talked about replenishment and what the cycle would be for that. We are meeting again tomorrow to continue our discussions and go through all of the items that we need to be ready for October 5th. But we are in the right spot to be ready to open.
Sounds good. Community relations and technology, John Samuel.
Similar to the other committees, we've been meeting, we met last week. Pat reported on the additional FAQs that are going to be published shortly. I highly encourage the public to go through them. They, they took tremendous amount of effort to distill through a lot of the content on the website to put together what we believe are the material points. If you have suggestions and you have other, you know, frequently asked questions that you think would be valuable to the public, let us know, and we will just keep those updated. I do encourage you to go into the section of the website that has a lot of the info. So if you want to drill into it a bit more, and the FAQ is not detailed enough, they are in the school reopening plan, et cetera. We have discussed, as Pat also kind of went through, that when we go back and we start October 5th, to explore additional technology that might help the teachers to interact with the students. So we're supplementing the technology and piloting some of that technology. So it won't be there October 5th, but it'll be there as the school year progresses. So we're actively in discussion. If you have any suggestions, please reach out to Pat, and he will bring it to the committees for us to discuss.
Thank you, John. Stephanie, do you have anything for us in curriculum?
Hi, my computer died, so you're seeing my voice out of Claudia, as well as you'll hear Claudia's voice out of her when she speaks. We did meet last week, and we are always actively having a conversation about content continuity. And our primary goal is to get the most qualified people, which is our staff, teaching the content to our students in the best manner possible. So we continue to talk about that. And as we are, we are almost in October, so typically by December, we would have conversations regarding any new curriculum that would be coming forward for the year or any changes to the program of study. So that will probably continue at our next regularly scheduled meeting. But in the, in the meantime, if we feel as though we need a booster, or some things are arisen that we need to meet, we will do so.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, policy and governance?
Yes, we've been working diligently on the new policies, additions, I should say, to existing policies, transportation, health examinations, and immunization is also one along with second meetings for other policies that we've been working on. So things are changing daily from the state, and as they change, it goes to the Department of Ed, and then it comes to us, and then we are constantly re-changing what has already been changed. So that work will continue. But we have stuff for readings tonight.
Okay, thanks. That moves us to the consent agenda. We do have an addendum to the regular agenda, and there is one item for consent, and that is under miscellaneous. It is recommended that the superintendent, that the board approve the attached athletic transportation procedures consistent with policy 3541 dot 31, transportation safety for the 2020, 2021 school year. So may I have a motion for consent?
I make the motion. It's Claudia.
Okay.
I'll second it. It's Alan.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
Pat, it's Stephanie. As a clarification, this form is to be used before any sporting event, you know, like game, scrimmage, whatnot. It's not an ongoing standing order, correct? It has to be, as you read the form, it has to be sent to Dennis and the athletic department 24 hours before that event, that sporting event, every time. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. However,
Patrick, you're on, you're not muted, or you're muted, I should say. Sorry.
Thank you, I apologize. That's correct, Stephanie, except I believe that there will be some times where there's a recurring event that's taking place on a Monday and a Tuesday where we will have the opportunity to, you know, streamline the process for the individuals who are involved. So just to provide a little further explanation, transportation in the COVID world is providing a challenge, not only for regular transportation to and from school, but certainly to and from athletic events. And we are, we would, we, no district would be able to hire enough buses to keep teams socially distant in order to move from one place to another. So what we're doing here is augmenting our existing policy so that families can authorize another adult to transport a child, a student, to an athletic event as a participant. So as an example, I'll use myself. If I, as a parent, want to have Mr. Graff take my son or daughter to an event, there's a process that we all have to go through in order to allow that to happen.
Patrick, we lost you. You hit mute again. My mistake.
All right, I hit the button. I
You did it again. You double-clicked, my friend.
Oh, boy. I'm fa, I'm losing it.
It's okay.
Mr. Graff, one other item. Item E2 is the list of clubs. Please delete Maureen Keel Health and Occupation Students of America Club. She's not going to be the advisor to that club.
Okay, so we noted. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions on the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, Tom, when you're ready. Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes, except 8E2, I abstain.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug? Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al? Yes. Okay, the first vote, under Roman numeral 10, miscellaneous, number one, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the reading of the following exhibit, 2000 series, 2121 slash E, line of responsibility. Does anybody have any, well, let me take a motion first, please.
I make a motion. It's Claudia.
Claudia, thank you.
I'll second. It's Doug.
Okay, Doug. Any questions on this, or concerns?
This is just a change, since we no longer have an assistant superintendent of curriculum.
Right.
And, and we're adding the supervisor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, Tom, when you're ready. Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes.
Okay, the second vote on the Roman numeral 11, finance and district operation. Number five, the superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the months ending July and August 2020. May I have a motion? Motion, Al.
Thanks, Joe.
Second?
I'll second it. It's Alan.
Okay. Any questions on the line? Item transfers? Okay, Tom, please. Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al? Yes. The next vote is on one of the addendum items under Roman numeral 10, miscellaneous, number four. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the suspension of bylaw 9311 with regard to revisions to policy 3541 dot 33 and 5141 dot 3. These policies were revised and approved on August 27, 2020. Subsequent to that approval, additional revisions were released that are necessary to be in place prior to opening on October 5, 2020.
I'll make a motion. Stephanie?
That's Stephanie?
I'll second it. Claudia.
Okay. Claudia, thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Okay, Tom, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John? Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, the next vote is on another addendum item, Roman numeral 10, miscellaneous, number five. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the revisions of the following policies per the preceding resolution. 3000 series, 3541 dot 31, transportation safety, and the 5000 series, 5141 dot 3, health examinations and immunizations. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, it's Claudia.
I'll second. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Alan.
I'll second it.
Alan, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Actually, Al, I do. I just want to make sure, because I was going back and forth, is the one we just approved, this is 3541 point 33, and then this is down below 3541 31. Is that, that correct? I'm just making sure that I'm not missing something myself. Transportation safety.
Thank you, Joe, that was, that's a typo. 3140, 3541 point 33 is the correct number.
So in, in this one, we're, at number five, it is 3541 point 33, which is my thought, and it just.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. No problem, just double-checking. Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, Tom?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move forward on the items from executive session. Okay, thank you, Joe. May I have a second on that?
I'll second, Doug.
Okay, let me just briefly go over a couple of the items that were on the executive agenda that we are bringing forward. We have a couple of, let's see, maternity leave absences, an increase in work schedule for a teacher, a couple of additional work schedules, the increase in pay for substitute teacher, the salary adjustment on the salary guide for another teacher. We hired a head custodian for the middle school and another custodian for the high school to replace that movement. And the last thing on here is the teacher of special education hire. Does anybody have any questions on any of these items? No? Okay, Tom, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to old business.
Al? Okay, so two things, one, my, okay. Pat, the co-curriculars have a theme this year that's around citizenry in, like, sort of a pandemic situation and then citizenry in general. And I'm wondering if we could augment that under the backdrop of taking some, some critical looks at Ruth Bader Ginsburg and some decisions that she put in and some of the things that she fought for, both pre-juris and being a jurist, as a good way to kind of funnel that conversation. So if maybe you can sort of disseminate that out. And I also wanted to let the board know that I am considering resigning. And it's not meant as an action or a response to any particular action or what's going on now. But I have two years left, two plus years left on my term and I need to decide if I can be the kind of board member that I've been for the past decade for the remainder of the time. And I would not make a decision in haste, but I will decide between now and the next board meeting. So if I do decide to leave the board, this would be my last meeting. So I just wanted to let everybody know that it didn't come in some letter form from Al on October 12.
Sorry to hear that. Hopefully you decide to stay with us, Stephanie. You are a valued member of this board. Does anybody else have any old business? How about new, new business? Okay, we'll open it up to public comments. If anyone in the, out in the public has a comment on anything related to the school district.
We have a question, Kucharsky, raised hand.
Hi, yes, thank you. I had an inquiry about the, what you mentioned about the superintendent, assistant superintendent of curriculum being replaced with a supervisor. I don't see any details on any agendas, I've gone back all the way to July 27th. So will that be, will this agenda be updated with the details of what you spoke about? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Pardon me. I recommended to the board that with the retirement of Mr. Feldman, who is the assistant superintendent, that we take the funds that are available and create a position for supervisor of professional development so that we would be able to continue to support the the technology that's required for virtual learning under any scenario that we have. I didn't, I didn't recommend that the board eliminate the position, but just that we temporarily not fill it and that we create this supervisory position in the place. So the line of responsibility that we have there just reflects the new, the new position.
Thank you.
Any other questions out in the public? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Claudia?
I'll second, John.
Okay, John. Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay safe, everyone.
919, Tom.